Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 14th, 2021 City Council meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order. Please note that this meeting is being attended by City Council and staff via Zoom teleconference. Thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate city business through this meeting process. For the benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, the vote will be by roll call. City Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Yes, Mayor Kalmick.
Here.
Mayor Protem Verapapa.
Here.
Councilmember Masalabet.
Here.
Councilmembers Sastarsek.
Here.
And Councilmember Moore.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. By the motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anybody wish to pull a consent calendar item? Okay, hearing none. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor, four supplemental communications were received. They've been distributed to the City Council and made available to the public on the city's website. Also, I'd like to note that for the record, there's a revision to on the consent calendar, item B, specifically the March 25th minutes under public comments. We'd like to let the minutes reflect that email comments were distributed to the City Council.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So now I'll call for a motion and a second for the items on the consent calendar.
I move, we approve the items on the agenda.
Second. Thank you. I'll now call for a vote by roll call.
Mayor Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmembers Sastarsek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalabet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we want to go into presentations and recognitions. And I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Chaplain George Vogel. After serving the Seal Beach Police Department and the community with dedication for 14 years, Brigadier General George Vogel is retiring as chaplain for the Seal Beach Police Department. As a chaplain, he has provided guidance to the department and on-call availability to civilians in need of chaplain services following accidents and other traumatic events. His services during and after the Salon Meritage shooting in 2011 were exemplary. In 2020, he retired as Chief of Chaplain Services for the Veterans Administration, their Long Beach healthcare system, where he had served for 33 years. He also served as a chaplain in the U.S. Army and California National Guard for 36 years. His training for ministry was at Talbot Theological Seminary in La Mirada, where he earned a Master of Divinity and a Doctor of Ministry degrees. In 2016, he was honored with the Award for Excellency in Chaplaincy from the Department of Veterans Affairs. George has been married to his wife Doris for 63 years, and they currently reside in Sunset Beach. So on behalf of the City of Seal Beach, the Seal Beach Police Department, and the community, we want to thank you for your service. And Dr. Vogel, if you would like to say a few words and comments, you may have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a great honor for me to be a part of the Seal Beach Police Department and a part of the city of Seal Beach. I think two memorable occasions occurred during my tenure. One was already referred to. 10 years ago, I was at the bedside and I was called by called to go to Meritage, and that's almost 10 years ago now. It was a very sad day. Another incident was also sad was a couple prepared their family and they took their own lives. And what they were prepared for, and these are things that are forever etched in my memory. But I thank you for the opportunity of serving with these fine men and women of the police force and the city of Seal Beach. I do have one thing that I don't like about Seal Beach. I live in Sunset Beach, and Seal Beach didn't annex us when they had a chance to. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you very much, and have a wonderful retirement. Next, I want to call upon Orange County Fire Authority Battalion Chief Truhill to tell us about the recognition of the Orange County Fire Authority Firefighter of the Year, Captain Lee Cabrera. Chief Truhill.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, city staff, and citizens of Seal Beach. My name is Justin Truhill, and I'm one of your battalion chiefs assigned to Battalion One, proudly serving the city of Seal Beach. It is my honor to present to you tonight who has been awarded the position of Battalion One Firefighter of the Year. Firefighter of the Year is an honorary, they are selected by a vote through their peers. And Captain Lee Cabrera is very dedicated to the fire service and his coworkers, both on and off duty. Lee routinely goes above and beyond the call, and so we recognize him today. During the past year, Lee has mentored probationary firefighters and paramedic students. He has provided in-person essential training and his experience to gear our new personnel toward success in serving their communities. Lee routinely assists firefighter candidates with interview preparation over long afternoons and evenings and preparation for careers in the fire service. As we recognize the need to support our own, Captain Cabrera volunteered as a crisis peer supporter, educator, and by managing the authority's Fire Strong Support website. Captain Cabrera serves as the elected Secretary for the Orange County Professional Firefighters, Local 3631, and supports its many committees. As our firefighters adjusted to the pandemic this last year, Lee facilitated the department's COVID-19 Stay-at-Home campaign and has been constantly available to our members as they work through the challenges of recovering from the virus. Lee is supportive and dedicated, and it is our pleasure to recognize him today, and he is with us at this moment.
Well, great. Captain Cabrera, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and other council members. Very honored and humble to receive this award. Been very fortunate in my career at an early age to have many mentors and leaders kind of show me show me the way and how to be a good firefighter. And that's kind of what I tried to do here in my position as a fire captain and as well as a director and secretary on our union board. So again, I'm very honored and humble to receive this, and thank you very much.
You're very welcome. What station are you at here in Battalion One?
You know, I work at Station 66 in Westminster.
Oh, okay. Well, it's a pleasure to see you here this evening. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Sure. Next, I'll call upon our Deputy Public Works Director and City Engineer Iris Lee, who's going to introduce our new water operator, Mario Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, honorable mayors, City Council, City Manager Ingram, and members of the public. The public works department introduces Mario Aguilar, the city's new water operator. He comes to the city with extensive experience in water construction and water production. Mario holds a D3 Water Distribution Certification and T2 Water Treatment Operator Certification. On top of all that, he is currently working on his water science degree at San Diego Canyon College. We are honored to have him onboard as part of our team, and we would like to extend a warm welcome to Mario. We also do have Mario on the line tonight, and I want to turn the mic over to him and have to say a few words.
Thank you, Gloria. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Looking forward to serving the great city of Seal Beach, and I'm very excited to be on the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mario, and welcome to our staff here. Next, we want to have a report of the Orange County Human Relations Commission. And so I'd like to have Human Relations Board Member Christian Lopez to give us the report.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, everyone. My name is Christian Lopez, and I am a board member of OC Human Relations. I'm here to announce the report on some of the work of our nonprofit organization has done in the city of Seal Beach over the last year and present you with copies of our annual report. At OC Human Relations, we believe that all people have a right to live free from discrimination and violence, so we provide programs to great, safe, and respectful communities. OC Human Relations partners with cities to manage challenging issues such as lack of civil discourse, meaningful participation of all residents in the decision-making process, and building positive relationships between police and residents. Cities and schools call on us regularly for help in community-building efforts as well as navigating conflict. For example, during the time of crisis, we are supporting households throughout through mediation as we have seen rise in family and neighbor-to-neighbor conflicts as the pandemic has significantly changed the way we engage with each other in our homes and communities in 2020 and 2021. Unfortunately, the spread of COVID-19 has paralleled with an increase in hate incidents and hate crimes against people perceived to be of Asian heritage. Additionally, the death of George Floyd sparked a pivotal moment in the current civil rights movement, which collided in a storm of human relations issues and the need to support. We received a tidal wave of requests to help facilitate brave conversations, deliver presentations about OC civil rights history, and implicit vice-training, and provide training that addresses diversity, equity, and inclusion. We are pleased to announce that we have created and launched Orange County Together that will offer a training in studies of corporate and nonprofit organizations, schools, and communities during the 2020 and 2021 fiscal year. In recent years, we have also worked on with elected to design and lead forms of enter, date, and work in the facility. This support is possible in large part because of the City Deuce Program. This program was developed almost 30 years ago with the City Managers Association. Cities across the county can make a per capita contribution through our nonprofit so that we are able to maintain our capacity to respond and support cities when needed. We are pleased to share how we work with the residents in Seal Beach over the last fiscal year. We mediated 11 court intake, two community intake cases, and police community mediation in the courts or community where one of the parties was a resident of the city of Seal Beach. In collaboration with the County of Orange, local law enforcement agencies, schools, communities, organizations, and residents, we documented hate crimes and hate incidents. And in Seal Beach, we had no documentation of hate crimes and one hate incident. In conclusion, OC Human Relations has appreciated the support. The opportunity to do work in your city and to support schools and cities in building safe and accessible communities addresses community conflict and strife, sustains a human relations infrastructure to serve cities when crisis situations occur. Together, we are contributing to a safe and respectful county and building important relationships that can be found upon in times of tension and trauma should they come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Christian, for that report. Next, we have oral communications. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any item not on the agenda unless authorized by law. No other business shall be considered. All email comments the City Clerk received before the start of the meeting were distributed to City Council and made available to the public on the city's website. Email comments received after the start of the meeting will be forwarded to the City Council after the meeting. City Clerk, do we have any email comments?
Yes, Mayor, one email comment was received. It's been distributed to the council and made available to the public on the city's website.
Very good. Thank you. City Attorney Steele, do you have anything to report this evening?
Just one item, Mayor. Well, actually, two. The City Council met in closed session prior to the meeting this evening regarding the one item on the posted agenda and took no reportable action. Also want to let the City Council know that as of last Friday, Governor Newsom issued a number of executive orders, as many people know, and the, all of them sort of aimed at the reopening process in California. The one that's, I think, most significant for local governments to know about is that the governor announced that the relaxation of the Brown Act rules regarding public meetings, which allow us to have this meeting all virtually, will, those suspended rules will expire as of September 30th. And so, starting in October, and perhaps sooner if the City Council decides, but at the very latest in October, the city will have to go back to the normal public meeting standards. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City Manager, City Manager Ingram, do you have anything to report this evening?
I have no items to report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council comments, general council member comments, and reporting pursuant to AB 1234. So we'll now ask for the council member comments. We'll start with Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to ask for council consensus to bring an item back to the City Council related to oversized vehicles in driveways. There's an ordinance that was modified in 2013 that limits people in Seal Beach from leaving their trailer, boat, or storage box in their own driveway for over 72 hours. And I'm not going to ask council for their opinion at this time, but I would like to ask for consensus for the city to look at other cities' local ordinances on having oversized vehicles in driveways and what Huntington Beach and some other cities do so we can be more in line with what's reasonable. And the reason I'm asking is this ordinance is complaint-driven, and many have small boats or trailers where it really doesn't impact others. And also, I've been told by city staff that enforcement is really mostly relevant to College Park West as far as complaints. And we have a few people in College Park West that keep using this ordinance to target specific individuals. And there's a loophole where if the owner moves their vehicle to the street and then back to their driveway every 72 hours, then they're still within the law and the ordinance for the city. And so, to me, it's just using a valuable time of our enforcement resources where it really shouldn't. So all I would like to ask is for council consensus to look into this and bring back a suggestion to allow oversized vehicles in a driveway, provided they do not project over any property line and area that's the area is still kept free of trash, debris, and parts, similar to other city ordinances that I'm aware of. So I'd like to just make a quick motion to have the city look at this and bring an item on a future agenda for discussion before the end of the year.
Okay, City Attorney, do we need to do that by motion or just ask for consensus to bring it back?
That's just a direction to staff so you can ask for consensus of the council.
Okay. Do we have that consensus? Councilmembers.
I would be okay to come back and have a conversation and see why we changed it and understand what the rules are.
And this is Mike Verapapa. I'd like to, I'd really like to solicit some of the feedback from my constituents and neighbors and residents to kind of see what's going on with their thoughts because we do have similar situations here. But I think I'd like to really, I'm not saying hold off on it and not do it, but I just kind of feel that I'd like to get some feedback from my residents before we open the can of worms, so to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Sandra? Sandra, did you have any comment?
Sorry, I was muted. I guess I don't have a problem with bringing it back for a future agenda discussion. I'm not ready to give you my consensus on whether or not we should change anything, but I'm willing to listen, I guess.
I think right now Tom is looking for consensus to bring it back as an item to discuss for, you know, review. In my case...
I'll do that. I'll go for it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just reluctantly, but I'll listen to what everyone else thinks.
Okay.
We don't have the you-and-leisure world, so I don't want to have any undue influence over anyone.
Okay, thank you. I would create the final word for consensus. However, I do agree with Councilman Verapapa that because the Hill would be would be another area where that could have impacts. And I would just like to make sure that, well, both Councilman Verapapa and Councilman Moore have an adequate amount of time to poll their residences and to be able to come back with a definite opinion on how the residents feel about whether or not we should allow oversized vehicles, RV boats, and et cetera to be parking in the driveway and what some of the issues are. So I would say then we do have consensus, so we'll direct staff to to bring that back as an agenda item. And, you know, after, well, all of us have a chance to look at the effects of changing that on our local districts.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sastarsek.
Good evening. Thank you. The last couple of weeks, I attended a Regional Military Affairs Committee meeting. I attended the Community Town Hall Budget Webinar. Thank you to the City Manager and staff for putting on that most informative webinar. I attended a virtual webinar put on by OCTA regarding the Ammond Avenue Wall Construction. Thank you to them for reaching out again to try to keep residents informed. That project, the reconstruction on the Ammond Avenue Wall, is now begun. The demolition started last week and going on near a lot of homes. 1,700 feet are about a third of a mile in this first big stretch. I'd also like to thank the city for agreeing to bag the street sweeping signs because twice a month, that might mean that people would have to walk their cars out of the construction area, which would be quite a trek for some of them. So anyway, that's all for me tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Verapapa.
Yes, nothing to report tonight. Thank you so much.
Okay. And for my part, I'll just let the community know that the park at First Street has been taken over by the city, so it now belongs to us. However, upon the recommendation of our landscaping supervisor, they would like to keep it, not open it for another few weeks to allow, you know, for the maximum amount of growth and to ensure that the planting that's there is surviving. So we can look for that opening within a few weeks, I would say. I attended a town hall meeting. Every other week, the cities of Seal Beach, Los Alamos, and Cypress have a town hall where we feature, you know, a guest, one of our electeds. In this past week, we hosted Senator Tom Umberg, who's our state senator, and were able to ask him many, many questions. And he was very forthcoming in his opinions about everything from, oh gosh, you know, issues that we're having with regard to SB 9, the housing, very important housing bill that's in process. So it was, it was very informative, and we hope to continue it and get people to come and watch. It's generally on at noon every other week. And you can get the information on the website. The other thing is, today I had the pleasure of attending a press conference and demonstration of the new heavy lift helicopters that Orange County Fire, LA County Fire, and Ventura County Fire will be able to use to make a quick response attack on wildland fires. This is completely funded by our friends at Southern California Edison. And these helicopters are amazing. You know, we all watch water drops, you know, on news broadcasts and so forth. But these are the twin rotor Chinook helicopters, and they each carry 3,000 gallons of water or fire retardant. In addition, there's a Sikorsky helicopter that would be the spotter, but they also carry 1,000 gallons. So it greatly, it greatly improves our ability to make a quick attack on a fire and get ahead of it. In addition, these helicopters can operate at night, which is another great boon. So it was very interesting to watch them lift off and, you know, fill their tanks and then come and make a couple of passes and do water drops. And they are in service as of tomorrow and will be here through the summer. And that's my report for this evening then. Okay, so we have no council items tonight. Now we have the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. Since there were no items removed from the consent calendar this evening, we'll call for a motion and second for the consent calendar. Motion.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Yes, Mayor Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sastarsek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Councilmember Masalabet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That pass is 5-0. Next, we will have a public hearing on item K, which is for the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, Water Shortage Contingency Plan, and Amendment to the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. And I'll call upon Iris Lee to give us that presentation, please.
Good evening, honorable mayor, City Council, City Manager Ingram, and members of the public. The item for your consideration tonight is the approval of the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, Water Shortage Contingency Plan, and Reduce Delta Reliance Supporting Addendum. These documents are mandated requirements of every urban water supplier such as Seal Beach. That needs to be periodically updated to reflect this operation. We have Serena Sriboon... We have Serena Sriboonwu with Arcadis tonight that will be providing an overview of these plans as they relate to the city. With that, I would like to turn this presentation over to Serena.
Thank you, Iris. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and, uh, city staff and the members of the public. Um, so yes, as Iris alluded to, we will be, I'll be giving this presentation. It'll be a quick overview of the three items that is in front of you today. If we could go to the next slide, please. We have the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, which represents the City of Seal Beach's Planning Elements to Satisfy the Urban Water Management Planning Act, the 2020 Water Shortage Contingency Plan, which provides the city's planned actions to respond to water shortage conditions, and an Appendix J, which is an addendum to the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan that addresses reduced delta reliance reporting. So next I will be going into the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. Just a brief overview of what it is about. If we can go to the next slide and then the next slide, please. So a background, a quick background. This is to satisfy the Urban Water Management Planning Act of nineteen eighty-three. It is to demonstrate to the state that the city is doing all the planning and will be meeting the demand in the next twenty to twenty-five years with adequate water supply. It is, uh, required for water supplies within California that serve either greater than three thousand customers or three thousand acre feet of water annually. So essentially, it is a document that looks at your long-term water demand and long-term water supply portfolio, which then analyzes your reliability. And it is to be done every five years and submitted to the California Department of Water Resources. So on the next slide, we kept, so this is the eighth cycle of urban water management planning, and there are new items in this cycle in twenty twenty. And one of them is the long-term drought assessment. So now we have to look at five consecutive dry years as opposed to three. Now we have to look at near-term drought risk assessment, doing annual assessments every year for, from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five. We have a standalone water shortage contingency plan that I will be going into in a minute. Um, energy intensity reporting, looking at how much energy is used to supply the city's water. And the last one is reporting on how we'll being self-reliant or reduce the reliance from the delta. Next slide, please. So in, in the nutshell, an overview of the city's water, water use and supply overview. The water use within the city has been relatively stable in the past decade. It is projecting to increase very slightly in the next twenty-five years. And that, you know, has to do with good water use efficiency investments and, um, the city being mostly built out. We're projecting about a one percent increase between twenty twenty and twenty twenty, uh, forty-five, which is, you know, roughly zero point five percent increase per year. On the water supply side, the city, most of the water supply to the city is from local groundwater. And in twenty twenty, the basin pumping percentage is about seventy-seven percent. And with the efforts of groundwater replenishment, that will be increased in the next twenty, twenty-five years. We're looking at eighty-five percent, um, of groundwater coming from the Orange County Basin. There is also treated imported water from Metropolitan, which makes up the balance of the city's supply. So some key findings, uh, if we can go to the next slide. So key findings of the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. The city has long-term, which is twenty-five years of water service reliability under all hydrologic scenarios that we looked at, including average year, single dry year, and five consecutive dry years. The city also has near-term supply capabilities for drought period lasting five consecutive years. And the city has plans for supply implementation and water use efficiency investments to meet its projected water demands. So, um, for Water Shortage Contingency Plan, in this cycle, it is required to be a standalone document. And the, the key elements of this planning document is to look at first, an, an annual water supply demand assessment that will be required to submit to the state starting in July twenty twenty-two going forward. So this year, we come up with the procedure of how the city will be doing that assessment going forward. Um, the state has standardized water shortage levels, which we crosswalk with what the city will be doing. And essentially, this document looks at, um, identify all the response actions and demand management measures that the city will, will bring out in a condition of shortage. And also communication protocols of how the city will communicate with neighboring cities and with customers in an event of a, a shortage. The last piece that I'll be presenting on today, which is on the next slide, is the addendum to the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. So this is, this was done this year because in twenty fifteen, the Department of Water Resources did not have any guidance on this, so no one actually got to it. So twenty twenty, the guidance came out and basically this is to satisfy the Delta Plan Policy to demonstrate that, uh, everyone under the Metropolitan umbrella is consistent and is doing things that will reduce reliance on the delta. So with this, we have done, uh, we have been consistent with the guidebook that, uh, came out from the Department of Water Resources. We've, um, done this analysis in collaboration with, um, both Metropolitan and MODO Municipal Water District of Orange County. And so the next slide. So summary, a quick summary of today's, uh, presentation and findings. The 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan satisfy all of the requirements, um, in the Water Code. The PNX J Reduced Delta Reliance Reporting is consistent with state guidance. And all of the draft plans are prepared in coordination with appropriate agencies. And the city is on track to meet the July one deadline for submission. And with that, I think that this is the last slide. So the recommended actions today is for the city council to adopt the three items that, uh, we just presented, including the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, the 2020 Water Shortage Contingency Plan, and the addendum to the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. And with that, that concludes my presentation today. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Um, do we have any questions from the council?
Yes, I, I have a few questions. Um, I wondered if, if we're agreeing to try to put less reliance on the delta, is that increase the pressure on the Colorado River Aqueduct then? That which is also multiple states kind of competing for that water? Or are we just trying to be self-sufficient?
Yeah, no, uh, this is, um, an effort to be self-sufficient. And, uh, looking at local and regional, regional meaning, Orange County supplies and trying to get away from imported water from Metropolitan, which does include Colorado River, even though the analysis is focusing, uh, reporting to the delta.
Okay, well, I think, I think Orange County, uh, you know, that, that does a great, the Sanitation District does a great job of recycling and, and, uh, it's, is, does a great job. Um, I also had a question about the one percent increase that's projected. I was wondering, you know, with our RENA numbers and, and trying to get all this building done, how that, how that is consistent with putting, uh, uh, trying to take less water from the delta and how are we supposed to, uh, how are we supposed to give water to all these, these homes?
Yeah, so on that, on that thought is the, the numbers that we use, so maybe we can go to the backup slide, which, uh, is looking into the RENA numbers. And so essentially, we used the analysis that went in to this, the Urban Water Management Plan, including, um, not only the cities, but for Municipal Water District of Orange County and Metropolitan Water District. What we looked at is the best available population projection and dwelling units projection that we have currently, which was updated in, uh, in twenty twenty. And a, as you can see on the slide here, so RENA numbers, the sixth cycle RENA came out in March twenty twenty-one, which our, you know, our analysis was well underway. And so what this slide shows is that RENA gives you the housing needs allocation, which you have, you know, the city has six months for, to update the general plan and then three years to update the zoning or doing the rezoning. And with that, that will actually, the RENA numbers will be feeding into the twenty twenty-five, uh, Urban Water Management Plan cycle. And keep in mind that the RENA numbers with, there's no requirement for any housing units to actually be built. And it's not a, a one-to-one looking at, you know, the increasing, the housing allocations is not a one-to-one with the water demand increase. So in, in short, the RENA numbers will be in, come into play in the twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty Urban Water Management Plan cycle.
So af- after some are built, then we worry about it or, or, okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll now open the public hearing. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public on the call wishing to speak?
No speakers tonight, Mayor.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Any last chance additional council member questions? I would just comment that it sounds like we're actually in, in pretty good shape, that we're doing a great job in, in using our own resources to the best of our ability and being able to be self-sufficient in that regard. So we have, uh, a call for a motion and a second to approve.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Do we have a second? I'll second. City Clerk, could we have the roll?
Yes, Mayor Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalabat, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes five oh. Next is Item L. To adopt fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two operating and capital improvements budget. Set the appropriations limit for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Reaffirm the previously amended fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one cost recovery schedule to be used for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. So I'll call on Director Finance and City Treasurer Kelly Telford for this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and community members watching at home tonight. Tonight, we, we will be discussing the proposed fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two operating and capital improvement budget, which we are recommending for adoption tonight. As you will recall, on May thirteenth and May twenty-fifth, we had our budget workshops where we discussed the proposed operating and capital improvement budgets and our five-year financial forecast. We hosted our very first budget community town hall meeting on June first, which was a new addition to our budget process this year. Also, in an effort to request input from the community, we conducted a community engagement survey, which closed earlier today, and we will post on the website in the next couple of weeks. Because we had so many opportunities to preview and study the proposed budget, I've prepared a brief presentation for tonight to give you the highlights of what we've been discussing over the last four weeks. First, I'd like to go over the budget process for the benefit of those who were not able to join us for our study sessions. Let's take a quick step back and talk about the council manager form of government, which the City of Seal Beach follows. The process begins with the community members who elect the city council to represent their districts. Those elected officials are the community's voice. They set the policies and strategic objectives for the year, which directs the city manager. The city manager is responsible for enacting council policies, and she manages the day-to-day, uh, operations. She does this by working with department heads who ensure not only that the day-to-day operations are maintained, but that they work with the city manager on achieving council strategic objectives. Finally, the city council evaluates the progress each year in meeting those strategic objectives, and the process starts all over again. The same pattern holds true for the city's budget. Once the council sets the policies and establishes strategic objectives for the year, the city manager presents a proposed budget. This budget provides for the resources to enact council policy and achieve the strategic objectives. She does this through an intense, but intense budget development process that all departments participate in. Each department develops a budget necessary to manage the day-to-day operations and meet those strategic objectives that have been set. Once the departments finish their budgets, the finance department compiles them into a single document that is adopted by city council each June. Part of the evaluation of meeting the strategic objectives includes reviewing the city's finances and spending through periodic updates to city council. This process is followed each and every year. In March twenty twenty-one, via a Zoom meeting, the city council and management staff met and discussed the progress of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one strategic objectives. And we also discussed the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two strategic objectives. Because many of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one objectives were still in the works because of COVID, the council determined that these were still irrelevant and continued them into fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. These are shown in the first three boxes on this slide. These include fiscal sustainability, organizational culture, and community outreach. City council also discussed additional priority projects, which are included in this final box, and sets forth, sorry about that, uh, which are included in this final box. With these strategic objectives in mind, the city manager and departments set forth to develop the budget that would address these objectives while maintaining the excellent of, uh, level of service that the community has come to enjoy. Before we dive into the proposed budget, I want to first remind everyone where we've been over the last couple of fiscal years. As you know, the state issued the stay-at-home order for the COVID-nineteen pandemic in mid-March twenty twenty. At that point, we were already partially through fiscal year nineteen twenty. With so much uncertainty around the economic impacts, we asked all departments to pull back on spending as much as possible to help offset the anticipated reduction in revenues, which we anticipated to be deep. We also, uh, we were also right in the middle of budget development for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and didn't have very much information on how deep the impact would be and how long they would last. So while we presented a bu- balanced budget without the use of reserves, this was only possible because the departments cut back even further and deferred many of the items that were priorities in previous years. Last year, the focus was on maintaining services and making reductions that did not affect personnel. As we begin budget development for fiscal year 2122, we came across many challenges that we had to overcome. While we are anticipating an increase in revenues overall, some of our revenue streams are still struggling And are anticipated to remain below pre-pandemic levels. I've mentioned the deferred items from previous years, and this includes maintenance of our facilities. Another challenge relates to the cost of construction. The pandemic has caused material shortages and an increase in demand for construction labor, Resulting in a sharp increase in the cost of construction overall, sometimes up to 50% more than we previously estimated. We also had set a goal of incorporating the CIP costs within current year revenue estimates Rather than continuing to use general fund reserves. We also had unavoidable costs that we had to absorb. Uh, we had a 3.6% Uh, increase for CPI that came out in the middle of our budget process. Um, some of our labor contracts uh include a provision for uh up to CPI increases, so that had to be incorporated. We also saw a 14% increase in pers costs. A 17% increase in insurance premiums. Some of this is estimated. Um, we we aren't sure if this 17% is going to come to fruition. Um, this is because of how uh CJPI charges us for insurance premiums. We also had a 4.6% increase in our OCFA contract, and then, of course, we have contracts for services That are already pre-negotiated uh that we uh have to stand behind. This year, as we went through budget development, We really looked at what the post-COVID environment was going to look like and not just getting back to normal, but doing better than normal. We took a solution-oriented approach. Trying to address not only operational challenges, but challenges that the community was experiencing as well. Many of the projects and deferred items from prior years have been rebudgeted To allow us to get our facilities back to good working condition and address priorities that we wanted to address in previous years. Going back to the council priorities, we looked at improvements in fiscal sustainability. You'll see the creation of the new internal service funds, the information technology reserve fund. This is the first time we've been able to achieve our reserve goal, which was set forth a number of years ago. This fund will allow for the continuation of much-needed infrastructure improvements in technology. And going forward, all of our IT capital projects will come from this fund. So when we talk about CIP in a couple of slides, you'll notice that none of the IT projects are included there. We've also ensured that the city is paying for 100% of its utility costs and have included almost $200,000 for the estimated utility payments next year. And finally, we have successfully incorporated $750,000 of CIP recommendations into the proposed budget, Not using general fund reserves as we've done in the past, but using estimated revenues for fiscal year 2122. This will allow us to keep our reserves intact for future high-priority projects. Knowing all of this, I'd like to briefly go into some of the numbers. The proposed general fund budget includes revenue estimates of nearly 37.5 million. Some of the revenue numbers have been updated to reflect the most recent estimates based on information available. Operating expenditures for the general fund are estimated to be 37.2 million. This number also includes a few updates since our last presentation, which are detailed out in your agenda report. The mo- most notable change is the increase in salaries and benefits based on the CPI of 3.6% that was released a few weeks ago. We've also made minor adjustments based on additional needs that were identified after the preliminary proposed budget was posted. Finally, as I mentioned, we are proposing CIP costs of $750,000, which we'll go through in just a moment. All of this being said, we are proposing the use of available fund balance totaling $470,800, Which is a $36,000 reduction from the preliminary budget that we that we discussed a few weeks ago. This amount is needed to pay for many of the deferred items that we discussed earlier. For all funds, the proposed budget estimate estimates revenue of $53.5 million and operating expenditures are estimated at 52 million. CIP costs are estimated at 10 10 million, resulting in the use of available fund balance of 8.4 million. This is mostly due to construction projects being proposed using restricted funds on hand. Included in the proposed operating budget are a few staffing recommendations. We've been through these in detail before, so I won't go through them in detail again. But I do want to assure the coun- uh assure the council that we were very thoughtful when developing the budget. And as I've mentioned, we wanted to provide solutions to both internal challenges and challenges that we've heard throughout the community. The Community Development Department and Public Works Department changes are being recommended because of existing vacancies. Anytime we have vacancies, we look to evaluate whether or not filling those positions is the right choice Or whether or not there is a better use of resources. The finance department is requesting for two new roles to be created in finance. One is a financial analyst to create a budget and purchasing function, which does not currently exist. And the other is for a part-time office specialist to allow for the resource A resource that the community can depend on For answers to questions when they call or when they come in, and this person would be the face of City Hall when you come in to City Hall to do business. Finally, the police department is requesting to add a new crossing guard at McGaw Elementary to address public safety concerns that currently exist. And while all of these requests ultimately increase the costs, The benefit that the city and the community will receive far exists, far exceed these costs. I also want to point out a few additional items that will ultimately have a budget impact in the future. The city is currently undergoing a citywide cost allocation plan and fee study, Which will be presented to city council later this summer. The basis for the cost allocation plan has been incorporated into this budget, knowing that we had some corrections that we needed to be to make. This summer, we will focus on presenting new fees for community development and public works. Following that presentation, we will bring the remainder of the fees to city council to study and consider. Our hope is that we would have, we would be able to have a new fee schedule that would be fully effective by Ju- January 1st, 2022. These fees may result in increases in the city's revenues, however, those estimates have not been included in the budget before you tonight. We are also nearly completed with implementing the new water and sewer rates, which will be on the utility bills towards the end of this month. These increased revenues Uh, which have been incorporated into this budget, but we did want to point this out because many resident residents Won't be seeing these increases on their utility bills until the next billing cycle. And finally, we are almost done evaluating the possibility of leasing Leasing fleet and public safety vehicles and the cost analysis is currently being reviewed. We did not include any vehicle purchases in the vehicle replacement fund In the budget before you tonight because we wanted to complete this analysis first. If we do believe that there is a possible cost savings, we anticipate anticipate bringing this back to city council later this summer for discussion. Next, I'd like to briefly review the proposed CIP program budget. First, I'd like to take a moment to talk about some of the projects that we discussed at the city council's Strategic planning workshop this past March. If you'll recall, we talked at length about seven key projects. And during those discussions, the city manager made recommendations as you see on this slide. The tennis center and the Main Street corridor improvements Uh, were both recommended for further evaluation. However, the pier restroom renovation and the pier area improvements Were recommended to move forward, which we have done in the budget. That's before you tonight, you'll see that in just a moment. We also discussed the pier restaurant feasibility, the pool part project and the lifeguard headquarters. All three of these projects were recommended for further evaluation, Uh, particularly because of the size and scope of these projects. Uh, and we anticipate bringing recommendations and cost studies back to the city council at a future point in time. Because of this, We are recommending that the city council approve a budget that includes the pier concrete abutment restoration And the pier restroom restoration as the two projects funded by the general fund and tidlin's fund for fiscal year 2122. I'd also like to point out that there are a number of maintenance programs that were moved to the operating budget, which include the Main Street pavers, Tree planting, tennis court rehab and the playground replacement projects. These projects were determined to be maintenance in nature and were very generic when they were included in the CIP program. Therefore, we felt it was better placed in the operating budget. And you can see here the the 750,000 that I mentioned in an earlier slide. We also have a number of street projects that are planned for next year. And of course, with the new rates going into effect, we have planned for a number of water and sewer projects to start working on the infrastructure improvements That we talked about during the review of the water and sewer rate study. So to wrap it up, as I mentioned before, budget development for fiscal year 2122 looked at what a post-COVID environment was going to look like, With a goal to not only get back to normal, but to do better than normal. Because many of the projects were deferred from prior years, We have rebudgeted these to allow us to get our facilities back to good working condition and address priorities That we wanted to address in prior years, which is why we are proposing to use 470,800 In available fund balance in the general fund from savings achieved in fiscal year 1920. Even though this is the case, we were still able to accomplish a lot in this budget. We created the IT techno- uh, I'm sorry, the information technology replacement reserve for the first time. We've also ensured that the city is continuing to pay its utility cost. We've incorporated the two projects we just discussed uh in the CIP program totaling 750,000. And Finally, this budget focuses on the city council's highest priority projects and allows staff to conduct evaluations necessary To bring thoughtful recommendations to city council for project scope and funding. This concludes my brief presentation and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Uh, do we have any council member questions?
I have a few questions, Mayor.
Sure, go ahead, Councilmember Moore.
In the, one of the presentations, you mentioned the one the we received the 1.7 Million-dollar check for a peer, the peer payment, is that is that in the current budget?
Uh, it it wouldn't be in in the budget number, it would be in the um amend, I'm sorry, the Estimates for fiscal year 2021. Um, I, we didn't go back and update that number, but it will be included in the final printed copy. We only updated the numbers that impacted the uh proposed budget before you.
Okay, and Um, regarding the council discretionary, Um, and that there's there's 20,000 normally per district and that allows College Park West and College Park East, you know, residents on the hill and even outside Leisure World's perimeter. Uh, and each council member to have a little bit of money to do something Which directly impacts residents in our districts. And it's been 20,000 a year for as long as I can remember, so Uh, the 50% reduction seems unnecessary. So I'd just like to get consensus to keep the council Discretionary as it historically has been at 20,000 per year per for each district.
Okay, um The, do the council members have any comments on that?
No, I don't have any problem with that. This is Mike, um, but I would say we Um, have a use it or lose it clause that's not carried over from year to year because um That could get kind of tedious too, but I think Um, if we did something like that, we should definitely have a fiscal year termination date. Thank you.
Yeah, I, this is Shelley, I would be, I'd be all right with that. I, this year, I I, my my labor cost almost out with is uh would have outstripped what I had, so um It's it's pretty challenging sometimes to find, to find, uh, to be able to cover your project, so thank you.
Sandra?
I don't have any problem keeping it at 20,000. As you know, I can't spend any of it within the walls of Leisure World. Uh, so I find projects outside the walls in my district. And I anticipate maybe being able to help with a A project along Westminster if we get a grant. In any case, I don't have any objections to 20,000 a year. I just give it back to you when I don't use it.
Very good. Uh, I would, uh, I would agree with uh Councilmember Moore, um, even with just the Amazing increase in costs to do small projects. Um, the $10,000 doesn't seem to stretch very far. And I think, uh, you know, that a $20,000 item Um, for each council member to use, uh, gives us the opportunity To make some improvements in our districts and so forth, so I would, uh, I would support that.
I just want to thank the council for agreeing. Thanks.
And so, Mayor, I would suggest that that item be included in the motion uh at at the time you get get to that point. So that we include that in the resolution that the council's adopting.
Very good, thank you. So at this point, I'll open the public hearing and Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public on the call wishing to speak?
No speakers on the call tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and then I will close the public hearing. So, uh, in any additional last-minute council member questions or comments?
Yes, Mayor, I ha- I had a few question.
Sure, go ahead, Shelley.
Um, I, in the vehicle replacement fund, I think you told us last time how much money was in there. I don't recall how much it was. If we decide to go with a leasing option, then Would that money be transferred to a reserve fund or what what would happen to that money?
That's exactly right. If we were to choose to move to the leasing option versus the purchase option, That would be the first pot of money that we use to pay for those leases.
Okay, I I also had a question about uh rental income. I I I had asked, I think, on the first Uh, the first meeting about the rental income for the uh house on Ironwood that had been, I think, going towards Uh, storm drain stuff or something, but now it's being put Applied to upkeep and if it whatever exceeds goes into a fund to support upkeep maintenance on others. So I wasn't sure if this was the First Street Restaurant, what what was in there, what would the money be used for and Uh, just a little more information on that change.
Sure, um, I I don't have the history uh when we purchased the house and what the original intention was. Um, I I had heard through the grapevine that we purchased the house Um, with the anticipation of using that land at some future point um for, I think it was maybe for storm drain improvements. Um, when we Had a, when we created a property management function, we hired Westridge to manage all of the city's properties, including the one on Ironwood. Um, we are currently generating um about $38,000 a year um from that property, but it does go into A common cash pool for all of the rental properties, which includes First Street, it includes the Annex Building, and it includes Ironwood. Um, that common cash pool is used for the normal maintenance of those facilities as well, for janitorial, for Um, anytime, um, you know, if there's a plumbing leak, Uh, that cash, that pot of money is used for that. Um, but it's it's not just, it's it's not used just because it's there. Um, as of right now, we have about $170,000 sitting in that pot.
Okay.
A a pretty good sum of money, but we do have some facilities, um, particularly the Annex Building That we're working with the property management company on um to determine some of the improvements. Uh, really, it's just, it's just extraordinary maintenance because it hasn't been kept up. Um, so we're we're waiting for a plan to come back from the property management company. But um it 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 would come out of that common cash pool, which the Ironwood money
But um, it, it, it would come out of that common cash pool, which the Ironwood money does go into.
Okay. Um, I also had a question on the playground replacement going into the general fund, I guess. Um, uh, that, that we did have something setting up where we had a, we had a, a, a study to, 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 to recommend or whatever, look at replacing them uh, a playground every year or every two years. But I thought it was like Proposition 68 money or something. Now that, would that grant money now go into the general fund that was intended to pay for this? Or how, what, how is that change working?
We're still looking at projects uh, to use the Prop 68 money on. Um, I know our Public Works Department has been working closely with community services on this. Um, we do have funds that used to be in an annual playground replacement project um, that used to sit in our CIP program. That fund was moved into the city's general fund as a part of that extraordinary maintenance that I mentioned, um, so that we can do normal upkeep. Um, so right now, we don't have a specific plan on what playgrounds would be replaced when using that Prop 68 fund, but I do know that that's in the works and I'm, I'm sure Public Works will bring that at a future point in time.
Okay, so that's not like stalled forever or it's, I, I, I'm just was trying to figure out what was, what was happening.
Um, it is knowing that the cost of construction um, has gone up so much.
Up right now.
Or that we're getting uh, for all intents and purposes, more bang for our buck.
That, yeah, that sounds, that sounds fine. I just wanted to make sure it hadn't gone away. Um, and, and my last comment was just that I, I was still hoping for increase in part. I'm not sure where to, where to ever raise this, but for part-time uh, employees' salaries, we talked about it at the end of the year and I was hoping it would come back at the beginning of the year. And now it's budget time, so I don't know if this is appropriate time to talk about it. But I would like to see that, that, that uh, I, I was asking that it be uh, backed up to January 1st, 2021. And uh, I'm hoping that will be brought forward sooner than later. Thank you.
Okay.
I had one, uh, one final question, Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, there, there was a resident brought up the Resolution 7048. Uh, can staff respond to that concern?
Sure. Um, when I first came on board, it was the very, was right in the middle of budget development for our current fiscal year, um, 2021. And one of the things that I noticed as we were wrapping things up was that the resolution uh, was very vague. So last year, when we presented uh, for adoption in June, we had built out the resolution to be much more transparent. Um, it, it focuses on all of the things that happened July 1st, on uh, rebudgeting CIP projects that weren't completed, rebudgeting contracts that weren't completed before the end of the fiscal year. Um, it, it formalizes the common practice of um, budget transfers. Um, these are all very standard practices in a budget, um, a budget function. Um, so, so I, while it is different, um, it is intended to be much more transparent than the previous budget resolution. Um, it even details out the increases in the MOU costs. Um, one of the questions that had come up was um, oh goodness, it was regarding, let me pull it up. Give me just one moment.
There, there's a recommendation to delete the reference to transfers between funds from Section 2 of the resolution?
Yes, so, so the reason that that is important to have in there is because in our fiscal policies, and these are in the financial statements, um, not in the budget, there is a policy to use restricted funding sources first and unrestricted funding sources last. That provision is not intended to provide additional appropriation authority for the general fund. It's actually the opposite. It allows us to transfer a general fund appropriation to a restricted fund if funding becomes available. And this is often um, most critical when we're talking about, about unanticipated costs. Um, we don't do this for capital because capital has its own budget requirements. But for operating costs, um, for instance, our Fund 4, which is our um, Special Projects Fund, if we identify a cost that was originally going to be purchased out of the general fund and we now, i- it's something that qualifies using uh, our Special Projects Fund or a police grants fund, we would prefer to pay for it out of one of those funds instead of the general fund. Um, so, so without that authority, we would be coming back to council every single meeting. Every time we had the smallest change, we would be bringing it back to City Council. Um, rather than just the large changes, which is what you guys have been seeing um, more frequently when I bring the quarterly updates.
Not, maybe I'm wrong, but wasn't there a listing of appropriation limits in this budget or?
Are you talking appropriation by fund?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that was something that we had removed last year. Um, i- i- it's pretty uncommon to include that in the budget resolution. Uh, i- it's more common to see your appropriation total by fun- um, all funds appropriation. And that's because the city manager has the authority to move where, where she needs to in accordance with the policies. Um, it, it's, it's not really common to see the detail out by fund, um, which is why we had recommended removing that last year and a, and doing the appropriation in total.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, uh, my only comments are that um, I support what uh, Councilman Sistarsik brought up about regarding the uh, our part-time employees and when the raise was to go into effect. I believe it should go back to retroactive to January 1st. And um, so I su- I support that. Uh, now we'll uh, have a call for the question regarding the uh, Revolution Number 7167, uh, Item L to adopt our budget. And uh, included in that, in the resolution would be the reinstatement of the limit on individual council discretionary funding from $10,000 back to $20,000 per fiscal year. So may I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. City Clerk, may we have the roll call vote?
Mayor Kalmy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes 5-0. So we have no unfinished or continued business. We have no new business. So we are now going to adjourn. And so I adjourn the City Council to Monday, June 28th, 2021 at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. So thank you, everyone, for their participation tonight and good evening.